All right, now let us move on to our school committee meeting. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Okay, approval of the minutes from February 12th?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of February 12th.
Second.
Any discussion?
Which one, who's second? Kevin.
All those in favor?
One abstaining.
Yep.
Do we have any comments from the public? Yeah.
There you go.
We're just wondering, what is the change with some of the buses being parked at home versus them being parked here?
Well, that was something that came up in the bus meeting. I think it had something to do with our...
Safety plan.
Safety plan, but I think, I think we need to really maybe revisit that a little bit.
Can I just put out there that me and Linda actually park our buses at our house. For my instance, my first stop is three houses down from my house. So it's actually costing the bus company more for having our buses parked here as it was for us to park it at home and picking up our first child closer to where we live.
Right, I think this was, they were talking about during the day. They were talking about during the school day because of the, like if the school had to be evacuated, they wanted all the buses to be here. But I've, I've heard from two or three different drivers and the thing about it is that you'd have the buses here, but you wouldn't have drivers because they're not all sitting home at home all day long. They have their hours that they work and...
But they could be contacted and...
They could be contacted, but as one bus's, one bus driver said to me, "Well, I might be up at the doctor's office and if somebody might be able to market basket getting their groceries and somebody might be someplace else."
How many people do we have employed that have CDLs?
Which also needs to have a passenger air brake endorsement.
I do, but, I, I have one, but I've expressed concerns about liability. I'm not comfortable, you know, hopping on a bus.
All I, all I was responding to was a recommendation from the safety committee that said if we had to evacuate the building, what was the probability of having the buses available to evacuate students into IE and clement weather?
Did this, excuse me, did this, when did you just start parking the bus here?
This week. This week? Actually, it was, I was asked to do it on Thursday and then gradually we've all done it.
But when you talk about a CDL license, the CDL license and a school bus license are two different things. You have to have... CDL, you can't drive a school bus.
No.
A CDL...
You have to have...
You have to have the endorsements to be able to drive a school bus.
Endorsment of the school bus and it has to be...
With children on.
Right, and there's also another endorsement, a passenger bus, which is what, 14 students?
No, it's two, it's two different animals because I have the passenger bus. I can drive any bus, but I cannot drive a school bus.
Right, well, I understand that part, but what I'm saying is two different school bus CDL things. There's one 71 passenger and there's also one that's a CDL passenger, small bus.
But the, the, the school bus itself, the school bus endorsement doesn't differentiate between the small and the large. It's, it's all one, it's a, it's a...
I think it used to.
Yeah. You gotta keep up the license to begin with, that's another thing. You gotta keep up...
We really cannot drive a school bus unless you have the air brake endorsement, the school bus endorsement and the passenger.
That's correct.
A couple of cars.
You know, I think, I remember some years ago that our plan was that if the school had to be evacuated, that they all went up Baker Lane, am I correct?
Yeah.
They all went up, they were all taken...
That's changed.
Pardon me?
That's changed.
So where do they go now?
We met with Jean, Andy and I met with Jean a couple of months ago now.
Yeah, it's been a couple of months.
And we talked about that the, even if the buses were here, that we couldn't possibly drive them, that you might not be available. And so we talked about how, the rate of accessing and getting kids out of here and buses on site were not going to make a difference. I do believe the original contract had them here. As part of the contract, it said that they would be here. And then over time, it has not come out that way. So I think maybe that's...
Since I've been, we've always been able to park our buses, always.
So I got a couple of clarifying questions. So the reason for the change in the safety plan is that we, the buses need to be here in case of inclement weather so that there's a place to house them, is that, is that correct?
I think there's a miscommunication here because I think when Andy and I met with Jean, we discussed this.
Now Jean is who?
Jean Abbott is the...
She's a first students supervisor.
So I think there's just a miscommunication. I did, I was not aware that you guys were now going to start parking here during the day because I thought we had resolved earlier that it wasn't helping us. So there must have been a miscommunication when we talked to, during, during, to the company.
Because normally even if her was...
I didn't think they were going to start doing this. So I miss, somehow I missed that piece that it was supposed to happen right away.
Well, can I say that if, if, I believe in the contract, it states that we're supposed to have two spare buses here at all given times. So in case, say, one bus on Acton Ridge breaks down, I'm over on Fox's Ridge and I happen to break down, there are two drivers now that are going to be down and we have to wait for the mechanics from Sanford to come and help us out and mind you, there's only two of them and generally it takes both of them to help one bus. But say in the morning, if, if I start my bus and it doesn't start or there's a red light out or whatever, then we can have, just come right down and pick up a spare bus. But this year, we have not had a spare bus parked in this lot at all.
Right, no.
And if the spare bus was here during the day with a couple of other drivers that don't take theirs, there's normally three, four buses during the day, not counting our two.
Right, so I think we can clarify this. Somehow I do not remember this being a decision that was made during that conversation last week. I remember us talking with them about that piece, I don't, so there's definitely a miscommunication.
There's not a decision that was made last week. We offered that as something for them to consider.
Right, so this, that was not an expected change for you guys this week from us.
Okay.
It was definitely something that was talked about, but it was not an expected change. This is news to us.
So this needs to be clarified?
It needs to be clarified because the way we worked out the emergency plan and Andy and Jean and I, we walked and we, we, you know, we really mapped out and...
Superbowl.
Because we can't handle it with you guys waiting at your buses, not like you're sitting out in the lot all day. So we will get back to you on fixing this.
Well, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that there are reasons why some of us park at home versus, it was, it was mentioned to me, why was one of the Acton buses parked at a home in Sanford? And that's because that driver picks up the high school student first in the afternoon to bring them up here. So it's actually financially stable for her to park it during the day at her house so she can just shoot right down to the high school. So I just wanted to make sure everybody's eyes were dotted and t's were crossed on why there were certain buses parked at home versus everybody parked here.
And it sounds like the, the bus schedule takes that into consideration for economic reasons.
Right.
Yeah, because just the cost of fuel would be savings to the company. Now, the other question I would have for you, the, I know, not so much for a student, but in the past practice with, talking to other bus drivers, they were reimbursed if they parked at home for use of electricity, for plugging the truck and, excuse me, the bus and so forth.
I've been with the company five years, I've never gotten a...
Okay, well, that, that, that may be something, you know, they may be saying, well, we're already paying for electricity down here, why are we, you know?
Yeah, no.
So if that's not happening, I don't see...
That's one of the...
That's a privilege for us.
Yes, that's what they say, that's a privilege of you parking out. You pay your own...
Especially at $4 a gallon for gas, so.
Right.
Now, something terrible happened at the school. You say there was some explosion and whatnot. Would you want the students sitting out in the parking lot in those buses?
They're not going to be.
Not going anywhere.
No, that's not the plan at all.
Right, well, that's what I mean, right.
They are not, no.
And we're not going to discuss the plan because it's a secret?
No, but this is not, this is not, this was open forum, I mean, that's a whole nother conversation.
No, when she said they went up Baker Lane, that's where my kids went and you said, no, no, not anymore. I was like, oh, fair.
What happened to the little baskets and clothes baskets they had with all the cones and the ribbons?
Yeah, we got those too.
You still got those?
Just a clarification in terms of agendas. Comments from the public can generate an item on the next agenda.
Good idea.
You can't...
And that's what I propose. I propose Trish take care of this and we check back on the next agenda.
I will take care of it.
It will be on the next agenda.
Or be in the next principal's report.
So now you're taking the buses home, right?
We will, we'll have a conversation with our manager and...
Oh, okay.
Get some clarification.
Actually, Tricia needs to, Tricia needs to contact them like ASAP so they can have some...
I'm able to keep my bus cleaner when I have it at home with washing windows and down here, we don't have access.
I will, I will just simply send an email tomorrow. I promise, I don't know what time I'm getting home tonight, so I'm going to say tomorrow.
Okay?
Thank you.
Any more comments from the public? We all set?
I threw her under the bus.
So to speak.
Just get the license plate, Laura.
Okay, are there any communications or correspondence?
Yes, I am very proud to distribute this from the original figure. And this introduces back that the Sanford School Department now has three student representatives who attend their school board meetings. And I was very proud and honored for you folks to say that there's a student here that represents Acton. And I thought that was phenomenal of them to take that into consideration. So I thought that was very positive. And Trish, you know who it is?
Jen.
Jen Callen, sure.
We know her.
Great representative for us too, I'm sure.
Yeah.
This is good.
The other thing that I have for you, I don't know whether you got it in your pocket, I don't think you did because I just got it yesterday, was an explanation from the MEA Benefits Trust, and that's the health insurance. And it talks about what is likely to happen around, notice the word, around, March 25th in terms of releasing our experience rating so that they can calculate what our insurance rate, health insurance rate is going to be. So this is the most current piece for us, and we can certainly discuss this further at the next meeting. I just wanted to make sure that you, you saw that it was hot off the press as of March 1st. So I believe, let me see what else I got here.
And they will be coming to meet with us, correct, on the 26th?
And you did receive the Mayan proposal?
Tell me, did they receive this?
I believe so. And you should have received the, the School Board Association interesting articles on retirement cost shift and the proposals impacting it as well.
You get all these in the mail.
We get those in the mail.
Oh, okay.
Wait, does Kevin, yeah?
Yep.
Elden 1442, transition to standard based education system. You should have received that as well.
Yep.
Okay, then let's move on to staff reports, superintendent's report.
One of the articles or one of the events that occurred back in November is that we had an NCLB audit of how we conduct business in Title I, Title II, used to be Title V, but basically one and two. We needed to send to the Department of Education how we identify and certify that our staff is highly qualified teachers. So what I have for you is a draft letter that I designed as a part of the superintendent's report.
Was this in our packets? I'm sorry.
No, it's coming, it's coming your way.
She's coming over.
I apologize.
No, 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 just a lot of paper, I can easily have them misplaced it.
There's another piece, Judy.
Another one of the pieces?
Yeah.
Oh, this is, oh, same thing, okay.
Acton Elementary School is required to complete a survey of highly qualified teachers, not, and those are teachers that are fully certified, not conditionally certified, and submit the report through MEDMS, which is a state reporting system, to the main Department of Education. During the first week in October each year, teachers will be asked to complete the NCLB, No Child Left Behind, verification of HQT, Highly Qualified Teacher, and an assurance report that I will also need to sign. Before March 5th of every year, the principal and the superintendent will verify the accuracy of the verification and assurance forms and we will submit those in anticipation of the due date of March 30th of that school year. And this is just sort of...
Paperwork.
You got it. So if I have your permission, we will say that this has been accepted by you tonight and I will be able to get that off in the mail.
Somebody want to make a motion on that?
I'm, I'm confused, what are we accepting?
What I'm, these are, this is a procedure.
It's a procedure.
Ah, the procedure, okay. I thought we were accepting the report.
This is just the procedure.
Works for me.
Did you want to do that?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Thank you very much.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
We'll see.
Okay, write the date later on again.
Out of pure curiosity, what is our ratio, or percentage of...
We have one nonfully certified teacher who is conditionally certified.
Only one. Alright, thanks.
It's excellent.
That's all I do, that ain't the report?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Then we'll have the principal's report.
We got the pencil. It's our last day of school now, probably. Cross out my... My first line says, I hope I won't have to cross the date out. Gee, guess what?
We're gonna have another one.
Now the eighteen. So, other than that...
It's gonna snow again next week.
I don't know where you live.
I think we get another...
So I have been kept dutifully busy with the budget crunching numbers, but also with the vision work. And they, they do cross over each other trying to plan for next year, both monetarily as well as programming. So I'll go over some more of that in a moment. The NAEP testing happened again this year in grades fourth and eighth grade. It's a kind of a nationally administered random test where they tell you you are so lucky to be invited to participate. The invitation is tongue in cheek, you don't have a choice. And somehow I am randomly lucky every time.
Amazing.
Yeah. It's, again, it's not very difficult. The test takes about an hour or two for the kids. But because they are trying to administer it totally perfectly and universally across the nation, they come in with their experts and their super efficient systematic approach. So there's a lot more prep work than you usually think of going with these little tests. But it does give us feedback, it does give national feedback on how students are doing in the various core subjects. Students may sometimes get a different test than the student next to them. So it's not like everybody's getting the same exam.
Question for you?
Sure.
I actually know the answer to this one, but it never occurred to me before. With smarter balance in the park, is NAEP going to become redundant? Is it going to become, is it more abundant?
I think it's going away.
I mean, because the only reason we needed the NAEP is because every state had its own different assessment system.
I think once...
Once parking, smarter balance should come into play, then we'll, it'll be better data because now we're not randomly selecting kids. It'll be actually all of the, well, 46 states that actually...
Right, well, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Well, they're nice people, but...
It's great that they're doing it. No, it's, it's been a great thing.
Yeah. So the school newsletter, Pressing Pause, is coming up again. And the next publication comes out the end of March. Our vision work dates. I'm happy to also announce this morning had a new senior volunteer come to my coffee and conversation. So that was nice, her name is Carol. She is a recent retiree who has become a full-time resident at Acton, her husband. She's originally, she said, from Saukoo many, many years ago. And she misses kids, she was a Title I reading recovery teacher and wants to come volunteer. So that would be an incredible asset to us, so I of course said, yes, welcome. I'm so excited about that. What's that?
She starts tomorrow?
Yeah. We have already been in email touch since 9:30 this morning. So I gave her a tour of the school and it was just great. She was really impressed with what we offer here. I mentioned here scholarship application time, seniors to try to fill those out.
Scholarships for what is this, Acton students who are seniors at Sanford High and scholarships for them?
Scholarships for students who are seniors. They could be at a different high school as well, for the few that might be elsewhere. But yes, it's Acton students specifically.
Can I just ask what happened last year? We just didn't have any boys go for the Holdsworth, so it was two girls that were awarded?
I'm not sure, I wasn't part of the final selection process. But yes, that's possible. It's also possible based on what they applied, as to whether it was, what the choices were.
What's the award?
$2,000. For one boy and for one girl in Acton.
And you would know.
Be nice.
It's nice.
I have, didn't attach it, so I have here, if you haven't already seen, the article on the Acton Wakefield Watershed Association. Some, it's hard to print out, but I've got copies here about, with Dave Cody working with the volunteers from the AWWA for testing well water. Also want to mention that there are after-school activities now being offered by several staff members between the April, the February and April breaks. Everything from cooking and basic French, board games, stained glass Legos are being offered at no charge to our students. This is done by teachers and ed techs, the staff members volunteering their time. I want to say thanks to Patty Damaris, Brenna Whitney, Sandra Packard, Gail Bovare, Mary Moody, Susan Mitchell, and Pat Putnam for stepping up.
Tricia.
I'm gonna thank myself. But anyhow, I really appreciate that these, these staff members are coming after school. The kids are thrilled, that they're offering a wide variety for the kids, again, at no charge. And that's Monday through Thursday, different activities are offered. Excuse me, Mrs. Driscoll has her drama club up and running. This is her third year running that and she had so many students interested, she's actually running two sessions this year in order to fit all the interested students in. So no child was turned away at those lower grades having that opportunity. And I know that Norma Pedagro is offered to assist Rachel since she has so many cherubs. Under the good news, I need to really highlight, this has been an amazing event. Started off with a, the Sticky Note Project started off with a literature circle group. And as I said, they read the book Skinny. I quoted the girls and their proposal to me that I sent out to the staff. They've started a sticky note, which is positive notes surrounding the girls' bathroom mirror is where they started. So they sheepishly came up to me and hoped they weren't in trouble for vandalizing. And sticky notes writing nice things about each other, certainly not vandalism. I threw back to them as a challenge that since it was such a positive impact in the middle school, what could they do whole school? They gave it great thought. Three weeks later, come back, they came with this proposal, Sticky Note Project. So last Thursday, sticky notes were put into every staff member's mailbox or every classroom teacher's mailbox so that the whole staff can participate in writing good notes to other people. And we're going to have a big display coming up. So really hats off to Hannah Bailey and Chelsea for following this through. And you know, the teacher support that they got for this is great. So then, I pass out to you now, this is, I apologize for the small print, but it just killed me that it was so many pages. This is a sample of a, a survey online that was available that Dave Cody found. It goes along, if you just want to pass it along, give it a looksee. It goes along with my draft of the vision brochure. And I say draft because there's always room for improvement and tweaking, but I would like the school board to look at it. The goal is that as early as tomorrow, that we could print off enough for Judy and company to take to the Owls. So it talks about what we've already got in place.
That will have to be enlarged for those people.
Well, the survey itself...
This is a work in progress.
The survey is a sample of what David found online and had a lot of questions.
I can't see, all right?
I know.
No, it's not just me.
But I want to know, even for tomorrow, if there are set number, we had some questions, some survey questions that Mary Jane had suggested. The survey that's online at this particular moment there is not matched up to our vision. It's a sample of what you could use. Do we want for the Owls presentation for them to take tomorrow, a paper survey for the Owls, for what they want? Or do we want to just say in the future participate in our survey? Because I don't think I will have this up and running electronically for the brochure tomorrow.
I really, I really think we need to tell them that it's a work in progress and that it's coming.
Okay.
I don't want to rush it.
I think we can, you know, tomorrow, we can let them know that we definitely are looking for community input, that we want to know how community members feel about the vision and about the changes that are happening in education and at the school. And that we are looking for their input and that there will be a survey coming out. I think that's the best.
So then I, just in the back there, I will eliminate the word survey with the colons until we've got that resolved. But it does give them a list of what they can do to get involved. And this is for anyone. So this is, again, this is trying to promote more participation from the community into looking at where we're headed. So, again, because of the short turnaround, feedback will need to be quick.
Now, we, we are meeting at Newsville?
Uh huh.
And where are we meeting?
Town Hall.
Town Hall. Please come to my house and I'll lead you to the town hall.
Okay, so could we pick these up around 11:30?
Yeah, I would like to have this done first thing tomorrow morning. So if there's any feedback, the sooner the better. Again, it's gone through several pieces of, pairs of eyes at this point.
I think it's, I think it's great. I think your conversation with the Owls, I think that might be an opportunity to get some feedback from them. I'm not seeing anything egregious standing up.
And then I'm also offering, I have asked Bill Shields to put me on the beginning part of the selectmen's meeting agenda for Thursday night, that we would go down.
Do you want me to go?
You are absolutely, you know, check your schedule. I've asked to be first. And that would give me an opportunity again to pass out more of these. And in case Channel 6 hasn't gotten my good side yet, I figure I'd stand the other way.
Is that Bill Thursday night?
26. Yes, this Thursday night, I will have a short, one of the videos, video clip that we have already used in one of the vision meetings and a quick presentation.
26, oh, I thought you said Channel 6.
Yeah. I'm going big time now. Again, the purpose is to reach as many people as possible in many different venues. So there may be townspeople who watch the selectmen meetings, who don't necessarily watch the school board meetings. I know. I find that hard to believe. But, again, trying to get as much information out and as much participation and community support as possible. So that's my, my plan for Thursday night.
Good, okay.
Any questions?
Two questions. This is just beginning of the discourse, I think, that I can see happening more in the future. One general question and a specific question. When students graduate from Acton Elementary School and they matriculate to Sanford High School, like there's a diploma at Sanford, is there some sort of graduation requirements from Acton Elementary?
There is a passing of eighth grade. We have had a few students in the past who through their eighth grade year did not pass like language arts. And we had them participate in what would now be considered a credit recovery, if you would.
Okay.
So we have had that occasion in the past. But there is not a prescribed, like the Sanford graduation requirement of 23 points or something like that.
Well, he's talking about eighth grade, right?
I'm talking about eighth grade.
Right.
We do have a graduation, is that what you want?
He's asking for the requirement and I'm saying they have to have passed their classes all along. But it's not structured in the same way that we have like X amount of credits at the end of eighth grade.
Gotcha. So my more specific question is, I'd love, it's not even a question, it's, it's because I've got my own answer to it. Is, is there interest in, because I definitely am interested in having a conversation around a culminating experience for eighth graders? And the reason, what triggered this in my brain is your work with the AWWA. It's, it's really, really powerful. So, students gra, a conversation around students graduating from Acton Elementary, having a required culminating experience that's really powerful as part of their transition. I don't know if it's worth discussing, it's something I'm interested in, but down the road, I'm talking about.
Is there a similar model for that, right at Noble? Noble runs that through the, across the path.
The Senior Project?
Through, yeah, through the, with the Senior Project.
Other schools have things called capstones.
Right, right.
So there's a lot of models out there. And they can, there are a lot of times they're service-learning oriented, but they can be a million different things. But they're a really nice, positive way to culminate from one context to another.
Right.
And it's also really in line with standard-based learning.
I, I am so in favor of service-based learning being.
This all can boil together, so it's just, again, seeing the AWWA here triggered it for me. I don't want to maybe just plant the seed that it's a conversation I would really, really like to have, because I think, one, it seems like it's happening, at least in a, to a small context. How do you scale up in a way that could be a really powerful, positive experience for kids?
Great.
I think the camp used to be, like, somewhat like that, too. The science camp that, that we used to have.
I know. I can go back to teaching if you want, Mary.
Nope.
You know, that, that was very hands-on, involved a lot of community members, and all experiential, the whole program, so. I think that would, I think that's a great idea.
Because right now, it sounds like it happens based upon teacher discretion, which I think is great. But if it could become more of a standardized policy, that, you know, you will leave here having, I mean, I'm sure they have lots of great experiences. My daughter already has, but they can be really powerful.
We can talk about that.
Yeah, I just want to throw that seed out there.
There you go. So then you just got the upcoming things. Thursday afternoon is an early release, Friday is a teacher workshop, the Vision Meeting. The March 22nd sixth-grade lock-in is to be announced. The lock-in date is, is in flux right now.
Does anybody wants to volunteer to stay the night?
What's the lock-in? This is new.
Well, well, the sixth grade lock-in.
I can kind of infer, but.
Well, the sixth grade lock-in is something Jen and I started, because we did lose the sixth grade camping trip.
This will be the third year.
Right. So, it's a stay overnight.
It's a big slumber party.
Yes. I stay in, I stay overnight as well. It's my consolation prize, because I no longer do the three-day trip with the kids. And Jen and another parent usually stay as well, so that the students are well chaperoned. It is, it's a sleepover at the school, eat, play games.
That's cool.
Keep me up all night. But requires another chaperone. So, we're trying to make that work.
Do you usually pull from the sixth grade parents? No?
Um, we did the first year.
They need to meet requirements of, they're spending the night, so they need to have been fingerprinted.
And these types of things need to happen. So, it worked out well the first year, and the parent came back. So that worked out in. But now that that parent has a conflict of scheduling. So we're limited in our options. And brave volunteers. It's super fun. So, thank you.
Okay.
No.
Let's move on to special ed. You've got, you've got Joyce's report in front of you. Betsy will answer any questions that you have about Joyce. All right, moving right along. And we'll move on to, who's next? Finance? Finance Director. And I just sent you a copy of her report, passed around onto you.
My report's rather short this week. I've been kind of busy with other things. But I just wanted to let you know that Trish, Joy, Mike and I have been cross-referencing all the budget requests with what was being presented. And the unknowns, like I said, has been a really huge challenge this year. We don't have numbers, we don't have contracts. So a lot of it has been guesswork. I just want to make sure we stayed within the guidelines, the timeline for what we have proposed for the project meetings. Judy, Mary, Andy and I attended a webinar by Drummond Woodson, as we said, on the budget validation process, which has to go through, and then through another vote this year, to see if we're gonna renew it for another three years. I've given Betsy the little certificates for Judy and Mary with saying they completed it, so I'll take you as that over there. Donna's doing a bit of Trish on the 2013-14 school calendar, which hopefully will be in draft form in the next school board meeting in April.
Right, trying to align it with Sanford's, and they're making some changes. So it's keeping me hopping, just when I think I know what we're gonna do. So, again, that alignment is really important, because of the shared bus as well as services. So Donna and I, every time I think we're all set, but they've actually made some, some big changes this coming year.
Did they accept their calendar yet, like at the March meeting, they will? Right?
Is it official now?
I think, is it not yet?
I don't think it's official yet.
It's just the draft form?
Because I called today, because it was supposed to be on the Vocational Advisory Committee Agenda, and it was not. So my guess is that we're a little postponed.
As soon as it gets adopted, you'll find it, right on the sand.
Absolutely.
And yesterday, Donna, myself, Julie, and Ryan all went to a conference in Portland. Part of it was with the DOE, going over Infinite Campus. But it was a great team-building experience. We learned how to, through the use of Legos, we actually learned how to communicate and work together with other people in a group of five, and it was, it was fun.
What'd you build?
We actually had, we all, every team, every table had to build a, a person. We had directions, and you had to leave the table and look at the directions and come back, and be able to communicate that to the people you were with. The first team completed in 22 minutes. We didn't, we didn't complete it, found the secret right after that, but. Yes, it was, it was, it was a very fun experience. It was nice to be able to work together, you know, with the office staff, because we don't always get to have those type of experiences, like the ed techs and the, you know, and I. And just getting to be with peers who have the same things going on and whatever. It was a really good day.
Where was that held?
At the Holiday Inn by the Bay.
Oh, so it wasn't too far.
No. No, it was put on by the Main Principles Association, so.
The webinar you referenced, that was the one, that was Friday last week?
Yes.
I contacted them, I've got a link to the webinar archive if people want that. Did I send that already?
Yeah, you sent it.
I forgot.
I was trying to record it for you on my computer, but I hit the wrong button and there's no volume, so I'm sorry.
That's what, they, they got it there.
Okay, we'll go on to. Andy's report.
Now I forgot what I was gonna say.
You have a report?
The, the budget stuff that was distributed at the beginning of the meeting tonight, along with Joy's and Trish, Trish's stuff was the cover sheet for the operations and maintenance budget, and also an updated budget summary. There are a couple of small changes on the budget summary. Basically, what I have done in the last month or so is I've been looking at a lot of the expenditures from the different lines from the past five years, and made a couple of small changes which are reflected on the budget summary. And if you want to discuss that in more depth, we can, when we have our next budget workshop. This month, the air filters throughout the building were changed. All the unit ventilators were cleaned on the inside very thoroughly. As Carleen and Judy have stated, I was in attendance for the webinar by Drummond Woodson. Lot of small repairs this month in the building. Nothing major, still waiting on some boiler remain, boiler repairs and maintenance. And obviously, the budget is what is consuming all of us at this point. So that's where I've been spending quite a bit of time researching. Like I said, I go back, I've, I've gone back as far as 10 years with some of it. Most of it is five years, looking at, you know, what we spend with different vendors. I'm getting some information in now from various people that we spend money with. Because I am concerned with fuel costs, like, you know, the supplies and our rubbish removal and stuff like that, anything susceptible to fuel surcharges. I am starting to get notices, DNE Rubbish just sent notification last week that their rates are gonna be going up slightly. But I'm still confident that what we've, you know, the requests that I put forward, I'm comfortable with. But I am concerned a bit about it.
And you're getting help from the green team or whatever they're called?
The recycling? The Green Club is not, has not been active for a while, but was still recycling.
But you recycle?
Yes.
So you bring the recyclables up to the transfer station?
Yeah.
You do?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that's difficult, that does get difficult during the winter months, because when snow gets busy, it's tough to.
Where are you gonna store it?
Keep everything open out there, and so I did, I was actually up at the transfer station this week, and I've got everything back up and running, and notified the custodians that, you know, recycling is to resume in full swing, so.
No, I appreciate recycling. And the building out back, whatever happened with that? He couldn't start?
We're waiting.
Oh.
It's, it's happening as soon as the weather breaks. But I've spoken with him several times, and once we get a break with the weather and things dry up a bit, he said it's the next one on his list, so.
Good.
Any questions for Andy? And we'll move on to technology.
I kept mine short and sweet. I think you have more policies to read, second reading, maybe even first reading. Everybody's working on the budget, as stated. Joy found, Joy found grant money to purchase 10 iPads, and I was able to establish a volume purchasing system, so we can purchase applications for the iPad, iPads at a discounted rate. And that is then, I, I've put that in place and started that. I've also, it's not on my report, but I've figured out how to integrate assessment data into Infinite Campus. We've discussed, and we've talked about assessing students and, you know, targeting students. I, I believe I can have a one-stop shop for all assessment data to be, you know, right, right in front of you for NWA's, DIBB's, kneecaps, whatever data we have, you can have there for, you know, a quick and insightful overview of who needs help where. And I'm gonna leave my report at that.
That's awesome. Okay. To have that capability.
That's just a matter.
For the staff to have that capability of accessing that information like that and taking a look at the whole picture of a trial.
It might be helpful to have, like, a workshop sometime way in the future to see how the Infinite Campus works.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Definitely. It continues to grow and expand.
I'd like to see it.
Would I have a motion to accept all staff reports, please?
Make that motion?
A second.
Moving seconded, any further discussion? All in favor? Five and all.
I have no committee or standing special committee reports. You can now turn Mr. Corey again for unfinished business.
So on unfinished business, we have the second reading of, do you have, do we have the numbers on those? From last?
E-G-A-D-I. That group, they'd like me to come on it, so I just.
You just gotta get a folder and keep them in there.
What is this we're talking about?
Technology ones?
They're the policies, right?
I don't remember what you read last time. I have it on my report, I-J-N-D.
Yeah, it'll be right here in our motion.
Yes.
From, in our minutes from last time.
Under eight.
These are now what we had last time?
Eight point one.
Eight point one.
B-E-A-E-G-A-D-E-G-A-D dash R.
Those were second readings.
Correct, is that what you wanted?
No, first reading from last meeting.
Yes, the first reading from last meeting.
Mike wasn't here, I thought those were table.
We didn't, we didn't have any first reading on the table.
They were on the table till this meeting.
Right.
Sorry.
That would be a first reading for.
So this is gonna be a first reading?
Okay. I believe I-J-N-D, I-J-N-D dash R, I-J-N-D-B.
Please do them slower. Go ahead again.
How far are you?
I, the second one, I-J-N-D dash R.
I-J-N-D-B, I-J-N-D-B dash E1, I-J-N-D-B dash R, and J-I-C-I-A.
That's not what we have here, though, right?
Now, these were given, they try not to give us tens of millions of copies.
Do you have that written? Yes. In, in your, yes.
Did you not get them all? Yes, they're in my, they're in my report.
Where, where do you have the ones, E-G-A-D-I? Where, where would, where did that go? What, is that?
E-G-A-D, that one?
That one, but.
I lost my report book.
Right, that was last meeting, was the first meeting.
No, the last, the last, the last one, that was the second reading.
E-G-A-D-E.
E-D-A, E-G-A-D, E-G-A-D-R. We accepted those at the last meeting for a second reading.
Isn't that funny, how come I didn't know? All I know is that, but what I mean is, this group of papers here, and there's no other.
Well, these are new ones, that's why, we had those last.
I know, but it's just weird that there's no numbers up here or letters, you know what I mean?
Yes.
So it's all one part, all one thing.
What's that?
Make sure they have the letters at the top.
So last, the last, the last one, okay.
Just here.
Yeah.
At that, and the other page, staff conduct with students, is that, you know.
R, then, but did you?
But nothing, no, that's what I'm asking, that's what I'm saying. Is this all the same story here?
I have a, I have a, I have a question. While Michael is doing his printing, could you do?
Can we talk about these?
Can we do Betsy's unfinished business?
Sure.
If mine's real easy, you've got it. It looks like this.
What are we, what are we looking at?
What am I looking at?
We're looking at district-level parent involvement policy?
Oh, yes.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was talking, okay.
And you're talking about the L.A.O. plan. And again, I want to explain by saying, these are really requirements under No Child Left Behind. Title I insists that you have a district-level parent involvement policy. The one that we currently have in place was done in 1998. This is the updated one. It matches what the Department of Education wants, and I would like permission to put an adoptive date of March 12th, 2013, on the parent involvement policy.
So, a couple clarifying questions on this?
Yes.
Just, there's some things that I didn't understand.
Yep.
So this is parent involvement policy as it relates to Title I?
Correct.
Does it have to be this title? Can we have Title I in the title? Because I was confused, it took me a little while to figure that out.
What, the LAU plan?
It, it reads, the title reads like "all parents," but this is for Title I parents.
This is for Title I.
So, that's just confusing.
I believe the reason it says "all" is that it should say "any" Title I parents, because kids are admitted to Title I throughout the course of the year. So it should really be not "all parents," it should be "any Title I parent." And I would be willing to make that change.
Okay. Now, are these policies, policies? So is this like a first read, second read?
No, this is just.
Policy-like practices.
This is practices.
Yeah, well, this is updating, we're actually updating the old policy that we had.
So this does, does this go in the policy handbook?
It'll go in the handbook, but it will also go in the Title I.
Manual. Clark, procedural question. As we get these, I know Donna has started, there's a lot, and I appreciate. As we get these, I know Donna has started, there's a lot, and I appreciate it, the, these are getting, these are online, but they're not all on you online, and she's continued to work on it.
We talked about that, they're not all online, and she is working on it.
No, that's great. So my question is, as policies are coming across our desks, like these, like mics, can I, is, is it a reasonable assumption? And my question is, when they come across our desk, are these given high priority and are they going electronically right away?
They are in a draft folder right on the website.
Okay, that's my question, so, like, if I know, because for me, if I know I've seen it here, then I know it's online. And that makes it easier for my brain, does that make sense?
Makes sense.
And then just the other one, I think I'd mentioned, if we can have dates on them?
Yes.
I know she's working on that, but revised, date, are you?
I told her that, yes.
No, that's great.
Okay, so then, then the other one that you have that you've never had before, but it is again, a requirement of No Child Left Behind, is called the Lao Plan. And Lao is a Chinese name, and it refers to the legal requirement to have a plan in place so that if you acquire a child whose English lang, who is, whose primary language is not English, that you have a series of processes and procedures that you will follow in order to get the youngster the assistance that he or she requires in terms of learning the English language.
But isn't also part of the requirement if it's proven not effective in the child's specific area that we're, we're required to teach in their native language?
No.
So a question about this. Do we currently have an ELL teacher in Acton?
We have a two-certified ELL teacher who is currently employed as the Title One teacher in Acton, but she has a master's degree in English as a second language.
She does?
Yes, she does.
That's good to know. So my, my other question is, currently do we budget for ELL services?
No.
Because we don't have ELL students, correct? So my question is, just because there have been lots of, I'm purely asking this because I don't know the answer, but schools can get slammed with, if you have an ELL population move in, you have to pay for it. It can happen in the middle of the year, and you're obligated. Look what happened, I mean, granted, it's a big city, but Lewiston got slammed with, so you, you can't predict it. So my question is, it makes sense not to have it in the budget, but at some, does it to some extent even slowly over time, invest a little bit to have it there in case it were to happen? Because communities like ours are draw. I don't know, I'm just, it's worth the discussion.
I will say that if this were to happen tomorrow, that I would be having a conversation with Tricia as well as the school board, and we would be talking about the possibility of Mrs. DeWitt being able to switch.
That's nice, at least you've got that as a backup.
And that's a real gift that she, that she is. There's also a huge ESL program in Sanford, and they have extended opportunities for us to have students assessed for free. They'll come up here and do it, and they have been immensely cooperative. And Mrs. DeWitt is also fluent in Spanish, so if that's the language that comes up, we can provide some assistance.
So I wonder, in the future, just again laying seeds, it, it's, it's great that she has that dual certification down the road, that when we look at job descriptions, that that's something we look for, that we would need. Just to put, this can be a huge-
Just so you don't get sued.
Well, yeah, it's just, you, you can't predict if it's going to happen. And it's very, it's not, it's not improbable.
Everything is done these days because everybody's afraid of somebody else.
Well, that's LAU, this is from a lawsuit.
Anybody ever say no anymore?
It is in the best interest of a child's learning.
I understand that part, but it's like you have no choice. It's not a matter of not wanting a child to have it, there's no choice.
We're lucky that, like, I'm doing work in Lowell, is it like 45% ELL population?
Oh, I'm sure, absolutely.
It's crazy.
That's, that's kind of the question I'm getting at. What if the child is, is not working out, then we're going to be forced to teach in their native tongue? So what's the situation we're running into there?
And they have to learn, they have to learn English.
All right, that's where we use the technology to bring in a person from Botswana or wherever.
Where?
I don't know, I'm thinking of a faraway place.
You have to help them learn English while at the same time make sure they're learning the curriculum, which is an impossibility, which is the conundrum. So there's no easy answer, but the legal requirements are you have to be supporting their learning of English and providing their curriculum, and as long as you're doing due diligence, you're okay.
Well, my concern is, just getting back to the fact that you spend a lot of time in Lowell, I think you'll find a lot of situations, whether, no matter what country they come from, if a student comes here, is there very little simulation done at home?
Correct.
And that's, that's the issue we're running into. So I'm not wanting to keep banging my head against the wall when it hurts.
That's it? I agree. And there's a lot, with this, you know, a month or so ago, I taught an algebra class at a ninth grade at Lowell. There were 11 students in the class, seven different languages.
And we could potentially run into that, is what I'm getting at.
All right, let's, let's hope that doesn't happen. How about that? Can we hope?
Okay, can we get back?
Sorry about that, I was digressing.
This is one more aside, Michael, are you ready?
I'm trying to get this, there's a lot of them in this.
What are we, what are you doing there?
The printer cut off the header, so.
These ones.
Do we want to postpone that till next meeting?
He needs some.
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, sure. I'm just trying to help out.
Justice, a very quick aside. Do you know what the largest ESL population is in Maine?
Probably the same.
Wait. No, the language.
Oh, the language.
That's in the quality.
Oh.
Oh, yeah. I would have thought that, but that makes sense.
Taking more of each, right?
Again, all, the whole package together.
Whole package together.
Don't, don't mess them up, there's a lot of work.
Mike, I can't read the little part.
Again, these are located on, on the school website, under, did we read these last time?
They went all funny.
No.
These are new ones.
This is the first read?
Okay, can we take, can we get back on task for just a minute? Before we, before we go into Michael's thing that he just gave us, we've got these two that we're dealing with, with Betsy. Could I have somebody make a motion to accept the Title One? NEPNNSBA COKBF as a revised, accept this as a revised policy? So it'll just, it'll go in the book as revised at this date? Because this is a policy that already exists.
I move to accept.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, and the second one that she gave us, the Lao Plan, could we accept this as a first reading?
Sure.
Jeanette says yes.
I second.
Seven says second. First reading on this one, okay?
Thank you.
I don't think you need to vote on the first reading. You have to vote on the first reading?
Yeah, you do.
Okay.
Okay, it's accepted as a first read, that takes care of those two. All right, now we'll come back to you, Michael.
Judy, it's four to one. I don't, I'm not going to vote on it if I don't agree with it.
All the, all the English is a second language?
Correct.
Four, one.
I get a headache, so I'm sorry.
I apologize, my, my policies, the headers cut off, so.
And that's the only thing we wanted, but that's okay.
That's exactly what I wanted in this whole thing.
Again, these are located under, the school website.
Don't worry, I could figure it out.
These are first read, right?
Yes.
Do you want them taken as a, as a group?
Yes.
Yes. So would you read those off for us as a group? The ones that you want us to accept as a first reading?
I-J-N-D.
I have them written down, but thank you so much.
Okay.
I-J-N-D dash R, they should be in order, is what you see in front of you. I-J-N-D-B as a boy.
B is in boy.
I want, I want-
I-J-N-D is in David, D is in boy.
Can you just forward that to us?
It's in your, it's in my report.
Oh, it is in your report.
There's more. I-J-N-D is in David, D is in boy, dash E1. I-J-N-D is in David, D is in boy, dash R. And then the last one's J-I-C-I-A.
I-J.
J-I.
J-I.
C-I-A. I think it's a button.
And what was the one, what was the student computer internet, I-J-D-B?
I-J-N-D-B.
N-D-B.
And these are all available on the school site under Policies, Drafts.
And you want these as?
First reading.
First reading? Can I have the motion to accept those for first reading?
So moved.
Second it.
We moved and seconded with these policies. The technology be accepted as a first reading. Any other discussion? All of us in favor? Thank you.
And, my side? I, I just need to go back because I do not have anything for eight point one under second reading of these other policies, because these ones that you just gave are all first readings.
Yes, these are all first readings.
I do not have anything for eight point one under unfinished business.
It says second reading, is that just a typo?
Yes, I believe that one, you guys did the, I wasn't here, so you guys didn't go forward with the-
We didn't do the first reading last time.
They didn't do the first reading last time.
Okay, so eight point one means nothing?
No, eight point one means it should say first reading.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay. Anything further? I would say the motion is only a second obsession.
So moved.
Second.
All of us in favor?
To discuss negotiations.